More moment. Ms. Connelly, you are good to go whenever you are ready.
Good evening, everyone. This is the January 4th, 2022, Situate Select Board Meeting. Welcome and Happy New Year to all. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Ms. Curran. All votes must be held by roll call.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Vignani, I see Mr. Vignani.
He did just join. He will join us momentarily.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Tony.
Roll call vote to accept the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related health emergency dated March 12th, 2020, Town of Situate public meetings may be held remotely. This meeting will be recorded and can be viewed live on Situate Community Television, Facebook Live. The recorded meeting will be available the following day on Comcast Channel 9 and YouTube Situate Community Television. If you would like to participate in this meeting remotely, you can go onto the town website and get the instructions that are on the agenda as to how to zoom into the meeting by computer or by phone. Is that sufficient for me to say, or do I need to read all the other language?
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. So we've called the meeting to order. Are there any walk-ins tonight? Zoom-ins? I don't see any. We don't have any that you can see, Seth, do we?
You do not, Ms. Connelly. No, you do not.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we have the report of the town administrator, Jim Butrow. Jim?
Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice holiday. Welcome back. We're gonna start, we're pretty much done with our water updates for the year. So we're gonna get right into our COVID update and talk about that for a little while. Every Monday, as the board knows, we provide an update on the state of COVID in Situate. We've received some questions from residents over the last couple of days as to why when they log into the state site do they get different numbers than what we're reporting? Or why is sometimes the numbers in the press like the Boston Globe different than what we report on Monday morning? So first, each Monday morning at 8:00, either Eileen Scotty, our public health nurse, or Drew Shealy, our health director, log into the state's Maven system. And the Maven system is the system that all doctors' offices, our testing centers must report their positive COVID results to. We take that report, we add up the numbers, and that's what we report on Monday morning. Those numbers are changing constantly as those cases are added to a system that is currently overwhelmed. So the Maven system was really not designed for this type of pandemic. So it gets overwhelmed very easily. But the numbers change on a regular basis. So for example, yesterday morning at 8:07, Drew logged in and the count for Situate on Monday at 8:07 was 13. At 1:00, that same count was 24 for Monday. So those numbers change as more things get added, as more people log on. Sometimes the reports will lag from when they're placed in the system. So testing might be done on Sunday, but they might not enter the data until Monday. And we try to keep up with that as best we can. We're releasing the numbers at 9:30 in the morning. The numbers that some people are seeing, the state chairman releases their numbers at around 5:00, 5:30. So they'll include almost the whole Monday's numbers that we wouldn't have at 9:30 in the morning. I think that makes a difference. If the board would like more comprehensive numbers on a Monday, we really can't do it at 9:30 in the morning because we're dealing with whatever the data is from the weekend to try to get it out. We do the best we can on Monday morning at 9:30. We consistently use those numbers going forward so there is a basis for comparison going forward. The second question was, what about the case numbers? I have said consistently during the height of the pandemic that people should not look at the case numbers. The case numbers are not the important numbers. The positivity rate is the important number in telling and being indicative of where the virus is going. So if you do 10,000 tests and 100 people are positive, that's only 1%. It's a big number positive, but it's only 1% of people being tested. If you do 100 tests and 10 people test positive, that's 10%, and it's a much bigger sample of what you're testing. So we've always told people you really need to look at the percentages. And when I talk about that a little bit later on, you'll see what I mean, and the percentage changes in what they're doing. The percentages we get are taken directly off the state website. Again, at 9:00 in the morning, I log into mass.gov, I go to the COVID website, click on Situate, click on the state numbers, and I click on the county numbers. So those are the most up-to-date numbers that we have. When I do an update on Tuesday, I'm using the same numbers I reported on Monday, so people don't get confused as to why they're getting two separate numbers. The final question was, why no mask mandates in Situate right now with Omicron going on? Why don't we require them in public buildings with Omicron going on with the numbers going up? First of all, the Select Board does have the authority to issue a mask mandate for public buildings, just as the school committee has done for school buildings. The Board of Health has the authority under the current public health emergency to issue a mask mandate townwide for any public spaces, supermarkets, and like that. The Select Board does not put the Board of Health does. We have said consistently, we have stayed consistent, that we will follow the state mandates going forward with the state. We followed the guidance all along. We will continue to follow that guidance. There is no indoor mask mandate currently in Massachusetts. The new guidelines, it is recommended, regardless of your vaccination status, that you wear a mask when indoors. All the public buildings in Situate, the town buildings in Situate, have been posted with the new notice that masks are recommended, but they are not required. Again, the board could put on the agenda and adopt a mask mandate, but we have been consistent since the start of the pandemic that we will follow the state mandate, and that's what we have been doing. So I hope that clears up some of the questions that people have. But in terms of the positivity rating, just so you know, the last 14 days for us was 8.82 as of yesterday morning. That was up from 6.48. So that's not a big jump. Plymouth County is at 10.59. It's the second highest county in the state behind Bristol County. It's up from 8.81. The state seven-day test percentage went from 8.32 last week to 18.42 yesterday morning. So it shows where those numbers are going. They're jumping up. One other thing I want to talk about on the mask mandate, I spent a lot of time talking to our health director, Drew Shealy, who's on here in case the board has any questions. Situate is very highly vaccinated. The vaccines are very effective in preventing serious illness from Omicron or hospitalization. That's another reason why we haven't gone into the mask mandate. A lot of the numbers you're seeing are in places where the vaccination rates are a lot lower than they are in Situate, and that's why they're seeing those numbers. To that, we are urging everybody to get a vaccine. If you haven't gotten a vaccine, get a booster. The booster rules changed yesterday. They will probably change again this week. Previously, if you had gotten a Pfizer vaccine, it was recommended that you get a booster six months after your second shot. The CDC now recommends you get a Pfizer booster five months after your second shot. Moderna is still six months, and Johnson &amp; Johnson is still two months after you get the Johnson &amp; Johnson shot. Also, yesterday, after our update, the FDA approved boosters for 11- to 15-year-olds with the Pfizer vaccine. That needs to go to the CDC for final approval. That is expected later this week, so I'm sure we'll be reporting next week that 11- to 15-year-olds will be eligible for the Pfizer booster. It's only Pfizer that's under 18. Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson both are over 18. They have not been approved for anyone under 18 at this point. Having said that, we are having a regional booster clinic with Hull, Cohasset, and Hingham that will take place next Thursday, January 13th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the South Shore Baptist Church in Hingham. You need a reservation. We will have 300 Moderna boosters. The website has the link. The Board of Health page has the link. We've already sent that out as an email and a Facebook blast to everybody, so that information has been posted. Before I go anywhere else, that's where I want an update on COVID. Drew was on here if the board has any questions, so I'll pause at this point, see if there's any COVID questions. Then we can let you get off, and I'll continue my update. I have just have a couple more quick things.
Well, Jim, I'd like to jump in and say that, you know, we had a very spirited discussion about having a mask mandate, a town meeting earlier, and we went with the recommendation. We strongly recommend that people wore masks at town meeting, and virtually everyone complied. And we're trying to avoid confrontations, if it's at all possible. So I think that a lot of people prefer being, that we recommend not require. So, you know, I understand that people, some people want it to be a mandate, but we found, I think, that it's better to strongly recommend and get cooperation. So that's, I think it's worked well for us.
And people do get very frustrated. I know you go to one town that you have to wear a mask. You go to the next town, you don't have to wear a mask. You don't know, you'd have a mask with you. So it's a much better approach if you're consistent with everybody. And again, I think it does prevent people from getting angry at our employees, getting angry at the staff. At the very least, they can just say, hey, the state's mandated. It's out of our hands. You need to go talk to the governor, so.
Well, and to answer the question we got about, well, why is the Select Board going remote? We have laws that we have to follow in terms of providing timely notice to people as to where and when our meetings are. And so we have to make decisions well in advance. We can't just decide the night before that we're meeting in person, or the next night we're going to meet remotely. I will tell people that next week, there is a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Planning Board to talk about the implementation of the master plan. And that meeting will be in person, but it will be at the Emergency Operations Center at the Public Safety Building, where there will be enough room for people to spread out. It is our wish to be in person wherever we can be, but I think this board agreed that we would take it on a week-to-week basis and make the decision that seemed best. And over Christmas, it just seemed best to at least do this particular meeting remotely. Our plan is to go back in person as soon as possible.
And if you just look at the number of people on the call tonight, the meeting room that we have for the Selectman's meeting would be full. There would be no spacing. There would be no social distancing. We would be completely full. So one other issue on the Omicron, and I know Drew's here, and he doesn't like me to talk unless I write it down, but the data that we're seeing from South Africa, which was the first place related at the Omicron, is that it peaked, and now it is starting to get past the peak. So what they're saying to us here in this country is that we should see the peak within the next couple of weeks, and then hopefully those numbers will stop coming down as long as the trend continues to what we see in South Africa. And again, the vaccine, the, you know, the misconception is the vaccine keeps you from getting COVID. What the vaccine does, it keeps you from getting seriously ill from COVID. It keeps you from being hospitalized from COVID, and hopefully it prevents anybody from having fatal complications from COVID. And that, it is doing very well, and it's working exactly as designed. So, you know, people shouldn't be concerned that a lot of people are getting breakthrough cases. What they should be focusing on, and again, Drew would have the numbers, that the majority of people that are in the hospital are unvaccinated. The majority of people who are unfortunately are passing away from COVID at this point, are either unvaccinated or have serious underlying health conditions that COVID will exacerbate. So we are still urging everybody, if you haven't gotten your vaccine, if you have gotten it and you're eligible, go out and get boosted.
Any questions from the board about the COVID issue? I don't see anybody.
No?
All right. So Jim, if you want to move on to whatever else you have to tell us that's new and exciting in this new year?
Thanks, Drew.
Thanks, Drew.
Drop-off. Really only a couple of things, because I know we want to talk mostly about the COVID. But just to remind the board, next week, also on the 13th, we will be auctioning off the house at One Tilden, One Tilden Road down in Minnetonka. That was the house we took for tax title. People who are interested in bidding or getting the information, go to jjmanning.com. That's our auctioneer. And look at the website. We're hoping to get a very good return on that, and that will again be next week. Widow's Walk, I was down there today. The flooring is going in on the clubhouse side, so that's good. That's really the last big construction item that we need to get done, aside from the walk-in freezer. I wasn't able to get into the kitchen because they were putting the floor down to see if we've got the walk-in freezer yet, but I'll be able to pick the board on that later. But really, this is the last big construction item to get done down there is the flooring in the clubhouse area. It's going down now. It should be done probably the end of this week, beginning next week, and that'll get us ready to have people in to look at the building prior to the January 18th bid opening for the operator of the concessions on the golf course. So we're very excited. If the board wants to go down at some point, let me know. Probably wait until the end of the week, let the flooring get done, because you really can't walk around the clubhouse area right now. But we're very excited to get that back up and running. And I know Ian is really looking forward to having an office in a building, bathrooms in a building, and a place where people can get something to eat and drink at the golf course. We think it'll be a big, big hit next year. Finally, in the guise of the golf course, again, we'll remind people the golf course is open for walkers and dog walkers. You need to keep your dogs on a leash. Please keep them off the greens and out of the sand traps, and please pick up after your dogs. There are multiple barrels down there now. I went by today. I'm gonna get a couple more at the entryway because I didn't see anybody there. But it's a great place to walk. It's a great place to sled. It's a great place to get out and enjoy nature, but please respect the golf course. It's a very expensive asset, and we hope that you can enjoy it without doing any damage with this winter. So be nice to the golf course when you're out there walking. And that's what I have at this point for tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions from the board?
None for me.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to our scheduled items. Discuss review, FY23 budget presentations. We have up first the review of non-monetary articles. Is that Jim or Nancy or?
I can do it.
Yeah, I can do it. I was just readjusting my camera. My, 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 let me just bring it up. So for non-monetary articles, you have the regular Chapter 90 approval, potentially an intramunicipal agreement with Cohasset and Hull, but we believe now that that's not necessary, that the statute allows that. We have a land donation for some land across Deccom and Drive on Route 3A, near our water land that's there, potentially a street acceptance. We haven't seen them come in yet, but they are potential. We have between nine and 10 zoning articles right now. One is to remove the marijuana establishment moratorium. Then there'll be multiple articles to allow marijuana establishments, one to allow recreation, to revise the medical, to set the excise. So there could be three or four different articles on that. One on lot shape factors, another amending the BCN district, and another one on setbacks in the R3. And then we have one for non-conforming derelict buildings. The board's aware at least of one particular building we have on the water. Our bylaw says if you don't make repairs within two years after storm damage, you can't make repairs on the building. That can be problematic if a building's of trust, if something else happens. So we're looking to make some changes to that to allow some of these derelict buildings that are really getting caught in that bylaw twist to be able to be brought back onto the tax roll and put back into use. One, I think that the board is going to be very happy to hear. Mark Thompson, Chief Thompson, has worked on a bylaw that would prevent tenting, camping, and sleeping in public. We had, as the board is aware, we had people actually camping out in Cole Parkway last year. We had people camping out to get on the morning list last year. They camped out for almost a week. So we will put something in that will prevent that from happening in the future. Charter Review Commission will have one, multiple articles. I'm determined at this point how many articles they'll be having. And then we have the petition article from residents to ask the board, direct the board, actually, to shut down the wind turbine. So that's what we have right now for non-money articles. Nancy, you know if I missed any?
Anyone have any questions? I can't see Karen, and I can't see Andrew. So if you have any questions, speak now or forever hold your peace on non-monetary articles.
I, I have no, no question.
All right. Yes, Mark?
Jim, when will the drafts of the zoning articles be ready? Like, do we know what condition they're in? Are they in first date?
Yeah. The marijuana ones should just about be ready to go. They actually all should be in fairly close shape because they have to get their publications in to have their public hearing. I believe they're gonna schedule a meeting for the end of January to go over the articles, separate from the public hearing. But I would think they'll be ready, maybe if they're not ready now, the end of the week. I'll double check for you.
Okay. So we can get a look at them?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right. Finance Director, Town Accountant, number 135, Budget. Nancy, I assume that's you.
It is. And in keeping with the board's directive from the last budget hearings, I will be, assume that you have read everything in front of you. And the highlights are the salaries are increasing approximately $10,000. Purchase of services is going to decline, and that's for contractual increases. And purchase of services is going to decline 3,180, and that's due in part because we do not have to have a biennial other post-employment liability actuarial study this year. We're on the off year. So that's the net increase of the budget from fiscal '23 from fiscal '22 was an increase of $7,336. The goals are fairly standard. They roll over from other years, goals that didn't get done, that needed to get done because of other issues such as the pandemic. And as always, we are busily paying bills and keeping track of all the reimbursements that we do between all the different state and federal agencies, whether it be from the pandemic, or whether it be from female public assistance, or any of the many grant programs that my colleagues are so successful at applying for.
Very good. Any questions from the board? No? Well, that was a good summary. Thank you, Nancy. The next budget is Information Technology, 155.
Good evening.
Hello, Mike.
Hi. Hi. Thank you for having me.
How are you tonight?
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you. How about yourself?
Good.
Just, that's a background for Mike. He's really not working remotely from some south sea island.
Yeah. I wish, but no, no such luck.
Well, it's very nice.
So if you, you obviously read my, my goals and accomplishments. I'm gonna jump right into the numbers if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Other than my request for a new position, the budget is pretty level. Some of the big, before we get on to the new position, some of the big line items that we normally carry are professional services, purchases of services, excuse me, and they're all level. We made the change to travel stipend that was funded, and we zeroed that out and added it to minority reimbursement just for proper categorization. Other than that, the real change to the budget is the increase, the request for the increase of staff. And I believe it's as proposed, half-year factored in at a half-year rate. And I would like to tell you why I feel we need a third IT person, if you would like to hear.
Mike, before you do that, can someone explain why it's not gonna start for a year?
Really just budgetary, Tony. We didn't have the available funds to do it for the full year.
But we will next year?
Well, we'll have to come up with half next year. So yeah, we want to use your couple of half in next fiscal year, and half the fiscal year after that, so.
But it's a permanent position.
Correct.
So we'll have to pay the full amount in budget year 2024.
Correct. But we'll already have half of it in the budget, so we only need to come up with the other half.
I see. So Mike, what do you need in a year?
I'm sorry. Say that again?
What do you need in 12 months?
I'll take whatever I can get, siding with the human body. So as you, as you know, we've, we support over 200 people, users within the town, which I equate to about eight, across eight separate entities, and I lump them as, because they're all separate requirements, separate needs. Library, separate from police, fire, water, sewer, harbor mess, or Widow's Walk, and then all other towns, departments, and operations are collectively similar. So there's two guys responsible for that. At any point in time, we're backed up on user support calls, which is a big problem for productivity of the staff across the town, town operations, and our ability to service the public, and their ability to service the public. We also have a more significant problem with the amount of ongoing maintenance, enhancements, and security needs, security monitoring, that we're not able to accomplish because we simply have the lack of time. We spend most of our days responding to requests for help, whether it be, you know, I need to be able to do this, I need to be able to do that, this has changed, I want to be able to, you know, make this modification, or I'm having this problem. We are beyond the point where we can continue to add additional technology to the town. In this day and age, the dependency on technology is growing rapidly, but we just cannot no longer support additional technologies in the town. We're past that point. Over the last couple of years, we've made several hundred changes across the network, which we required an investment of time to accomplish. However, some of those changes have been significant amount of technology to the town, which requires ongoing attention, like such as maintenance and whatnot. We have implemented several technology, several security-related technologies which require time for administration, operation, maintenance, and response. Across the town buildings, we now have a large number of security cameras, which we've added over the last 12 months. This has actually been extremely time-consuming for the IT department, which previously the cameras that we had were not the responsibility of the IT department. They were kind of just floundering around with no ownership. IT took them on and then took on the expanded system that we invested in a couple of years ago. We now have a new senior center with a significant amount of technology and audio, with audio-video equipment. We have a new fire station that previously didn't have any technology, that now has a lot of technology. We have a faster, more resilient area, wide-area network, connecting all our building with fiber optic cables. Each building has network switches, which add to the overall technology footprint to the town and all require maintenance. We've been working with the water and sewer departments more closely than ever. In fact, my understanding prior to me arriving is that the technology department never met with the water and sewer department on any technology initiatives, but we're very active with both of them, redesigning both networks and planning for the future water treatment plant and more. We've been working. We've been implementing a new online permitting solution for the residents and for the various departments around town, requiring, again, also requiring ongoing maintenance and support for the staff. Process, we're in the process of expanding our phone system, switching from analog to voice-over IP, which will mean we'll have more devices on our network to maintain and manage. We need to keep up with industry trends and changes in security technology to adapt to new threats. Keeping up to date with training is essential, but we're currently unable to, as we just don't have time to get out of the office to take any training, or even attend webinars at our desk. The phone's nonstop. We can't sit and focus on any one hour that's not interrupted. Couple of years ago, the police department had a technology-focused officer who is no longer with the town, and he took care of a lot of the department's technology needs, allowing the IT department to primarily focus on the rest of town. Since that, since that officer is no longer with the town, the police department's technologies, technology needs now are 100% with the IT department, and it consumes more technology resources than ever. Additionally, the police department has some technology initiatives coming up over the next couple of years that will consume additional resources. There's the GIS initiative that's, that's been mulling around that will also require a lot of technology resources. You know, to put things a little bit in perspective, two years ago, the town only had network passwords, internet firewalls, and antiquated antivirus protecting it. While these are individually, individually, they're important pieces. Collectively, there are not nearly enough to secure and protect the town adequately. Since then, I've implemented over a dozen new security tools, most for free, many paid for by grants, and some provided by various state and federal agencies. There are even more grant opportunities available to us, but we don't have the resources to take advantage of them. Many of these systems need to be administered, maintained, and monitored to watch for security events and further protect the town. Unfortunately, this is also time-consuming with resources we just don't have. The expansion of the phone system that I had mentioned, and subsequent telecommunications, changes to the telecommunications will save the town significant money. But again, it requires an investment of time, not only to implement the phone switch, the phone system, but to make all the changes in the services, the telephone services. The town's technology needs have been growing rapidly. Technology is constantly evolving, and so are the security threats, which we have, which we've seen an increase, the industry has seen an increase by more than 400% in the last 12 months alone. We've been expanding our technology in town, which is its greatest capabilities and efficiencies. And while the technology is evolving, so must the number of the IT staff that it takes to maintain the new technology and support them. We need to be able to evolve, and we currently lack staffing resources to do so. And that is the underlying reason why I have made And that is the underlying reason why I have made this request. I in I don't want anybody to think that I'm saying we need a third IT person because of security. That's I'm not hiding behind that. We do, but the third IT person is not going to it'll make us invincible. You know, the third IT person's primary role will be to sit. Sorry, will be to sit between the help desk and myself on the networking side and kind of do both two different jobs that come up, replace firewalls, modify switch configurations, so on and so forth. There's a I have a list of over like two hundred things that need to be done that this person in this role would take care of.
That's a lot of work, Mike. I will for the people who can't see the the information. The department request this year was six hundred thirty three thousand four hundred thirty one dollars. The town administrator came up with a number of six hundred sixty nine thousand nine hundred and seventy one for a difference of thirty six thousand five hundred and forty. Clearly, there's a lot going on in IT and does the board have any questions, comments?
Well, you know, go ahead, Tony.
Am I muted? Nope. Yeah, I was just wondering if there's any other, Jim, if there's any other possibilities, if if not hiring a person, but getting some sort of contract with some people that can do the things that Mike, you know, the the kind of lower level stuff that we have our top resources doing. You know, getting printers to work, getting networking to work, getting email to work, all those types of things that I'm sure, Mike, you're running all over the place to get everyone functioning for their daily work as opposed to working on the bigger projects. You know, if we can't actually hire a body, can we spend money on a company to come in and and support that?
So, Tony, I know you asked that question to Jim, but if I may answer it, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
A little over a year and a half ago, when Microsoft was deprecating Windows ten, the the town needed to rapidly deploy. I'm sorry, Windows seven, the town needed to rapidly deploy Windows ten. And with Jim's help and Nancy's help getting the funds together, we hired a temp contracting company. And I think their hourly wage on a low level employee with low level skill set was sixty five dollars an hour. You know, it's it would be cheaper for us to get somebody on our our payroll that would be at a higher qualification or a higher level of experience. My thoughts.
Yeah, I I don't deny that. I'm just saying if that's not a possibility, did that did that technician help you?
He had provided limited help for us. We ended up ending his agreement a little earlier because it just his skill level just wasn't enough and because we were scraping. I we were looking for a low level employee because we the funds that we were scraping together. Unfortunately, is the skill set was just too low for us.
Okay.
Did I hear Karen Canfield?
Amara's first.
Oh, Mara, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Oh, no, no worries. So just to back up, you know, with what Tony's adding, do we? I don't see that we have any type of a technical services line. You know, I think Mike's request for an additional headcount is well warranted, especially given that I guess I'd like to hear what Chief Thompson has to say during his budget presentation, if there's any consideration in bringing any technology folks under his line. But it does seem like a lot. I mean, I I fully support an additional person. Obviously, it looks like Jim and Nancy have as well. But I'm wondering if we if we have room, you know, at the end of our budgeting cycle, we always seem to look at, you know, things, things, things adjust a little bit, right? Does it make sense to put a technical services line for additional contractual help to help offset additionally in addition to this person?
I mean, I don't want to speak for Mike, but I know there's a couple of things with hiring outside people. You you're giving outside people access into your system, which is not always a good thing. You basically, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I was putting a hole in your system to let them in that then could let other people in and hiring outside contractors will also eat up a lot of Mike's time because you have to make sure that you're monitoring what they're doing. If they're making changes in your system, if they're doing things in your system, Mike has to be aware of exactly what they're doing. So when they're gone, he knows where they went, what they did. So sometimes having outside contractors can take more work than they're taking off your plate.
Yeah, a lot of babysitting.
Yeah. And and are we still looking just to start this, you know, after town meetings approval or are we? Do we have anything budgeted to start this search earlier? Find a good candidate?
Now, this is not budgeted until January first of twenty twenty three. This is six months into the new fiscal year.
That's a long time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Canfield.
Yeah, my two cents. Mike, thank you for all of the thorough backup. It really did lay out everything that was why this is this essential role, both to more on Tony's point. If we were, you know, even if you were to advertise for the job tomorrow, it's probably going to be a couple of months before somebody comes on board. Do you think Jim and Nancy that there's room to even if it's add bump that up a quarter, it's cheaper than sixty five dollars an hour for contract people? That I would think that that's something we might want to look at. The need is clearly demonstrated. And it would be cheaper than contract.
When when we get the final state numbers, we always look to see where if any of those additional dollars will go. I am anticipating additional money. As I've said, this administration has been consistent that whatever state revenue goes up, whatever percentage state revenue goes up, that's what local aid goes up. So just if state aids up two percent, we get another two percent of local aid coming in because we've level funded local aid. So it is possible, but I don't want to say for certain at this point, yes or no.
Okay.
But again, this is the only new position in the budget. We we funded it as soon as we could get it funded.
There's plenty of ways to spend it, but that one might be one we want to revisit because it's going to be short money in the long in the long term, I would think.
I agree with that.
Mike's done such a good job upgrading all the security. There's nothing left to do.
I wish.
I don't think he agrees with you on that one. Never say never.
Sit back and click on emails and everything.
I love what that would be.
And that.
Did I hear? Am I here, Andrew? Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. I am here. I promise. No, I mean, I guess I just want to reiterate that point that it isn't just about security as well. I know that's always top of mind, thankfully, but I mean, I just think the folks at home, you know, they're going to expect so much more from us about technology moving forward and these big picture items of, you know, from the scatter for the water and sewer, but even different payment models and what's happening for hybrid meetings and everything that's going on. I think making sure that we don't having that bigger picture is going to be really important, I I think sooner rather than later. So yeah, I fully support us trying to find some way to to make sure that we don't lose that focus. So that's all.
All right. I think we can move on now if that's the consensus. Yes. Thank you, Mike.
The only thing I had is typically what I do, and I know probably all do is make little check marks as to at the end any changes that we want to make. And, Mike, this is well noted. So thanks for your presentation.
I appreciate it and I appreciate all your support over the last couple of years and hopefully, hopefully we can make forward more more additional forward progress. So thank you, everyone.
Very good. Thank you. Next up is police two ten. I assume Mark Thompson is here, the chief.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing very well. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you and good evening, everyone.
So would you like us, would you like to give us an overview of what's gone on in the past year? And then we'll we'll get into the numbers for the upcoming budget year?
Sure, absolutely. So the the past year, we've had a lot of positive things happen. There's obviously been, I think, like a lot of the other departments too, we've obviously faced a lot of challenges with COVID. That's been something that we continue to operate twenty four seven. So we've gone through those challenges and I think the officers here and the staff have done a fantastic job and certainly working with with Jim and Nancy and everyone else up at Town Hall to make sure that we've gotten through there. A lot of other really good highlights in terms of just promotions for a couple of sergeants through attrition. We've been able to move officers along in that way. We've had four new full time patrol officers, four new part time officers. So there's a continual training process that's always happening here with officers at the academy in service training. So it's we're definitely not stagnant as far as is what's happening in that way. Really good success Lieutenant O'Shea has been spearheading our I A C P one mind campaign that if you remember from last year, that's really a focus on mental health and bringing together mental health for public safety or other contributors within the community, making sure that everybody's kind of rolling in the same direction to address that. So that's a goal for ours. We've been making great success with that. And we're doing a lot again with with outside training and collaboration with our neighboring communities and partners. I think one of the things that we continually see is A, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as following best practices. But also, when things happen, we rely on our partners and the other communities. Metrolec is a huge example of that. So we've had a lot of good success with that and making sure that our folks are trained up. We're doing the same thing as the other communities are. And and that's something that really been a highlight for us over the past year. So as we get into the budget a little bit, I guess if you wanted to jump in that.
If you could give us the 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 whole the whole number, what you recommended, what the TA recommended and and tell us a little bit about the difference because there is a difference.
Sure, there is. There is a difference. So the department request was for four million four hundred sixty fourth thousand dollars sixty eight. I'm sorry, four sixty four oh six eight. And the recommendation that that came through was four million four oh five eight four three. So there's there's a bit of a difference there in terms of of what's coming through. The biggest thing in terms of increase that we see is just in staffing. I'm sorry. So that's where where one of the changes came was what our staffing requests were in a couple of the other things that we saw in terms of just upticks due to costs, particularly in supplies and services. So I guess if the the question you kind of get to is we were asking for a significant increase in staffing and that was really associated with changes that have come along over the course of the past year as well with police reform and the way that officers are hired, the way that they're trained in the pool of officers that we're anticipating coming along. So for a department such as Situate, we see a significant uptick in our, you know, influx in activity in the town in the summer. And that's something historically we've really ramped up what our staffing looks like in the summer. We're anticipating that in the next year and subsequent years, that staffing is not going to be available with part time officers. So we'll need to really kind of change the way we're we're going to be conducting operations. So that was really a big ask that we had in then, you know, from the town standpoint and being able to budget that right now in the first year. We're not able to do that right now.
All right. Questions from the board about that particular issue?
Ask a question, Karen.
Yes.
Thank you. Chief, where is that reflected in the budget? I'm not seeing a huge deficit. Is it just under regular salaries? I'm trying to find the line item where it we're seeing that impact.
So the was was in the narrative for the request. I mean, I think that there's a change in personal services where we're up one hundred and seventy five thousand, which is really, I think, the difference in, I'll let Nancy correct me when I'm wrong. It's a difference of one body, but it's also the difference of COLA and just contractual adjustments that would reflect that increase.
Okay.
Chief, I see there's two vacant positions. Is this incorporated in that?
Correct. So one of the vacant positions would be would be the new position. The other one is a vacancy. We have a retirement that would be in the process of filling. So as of right now, there's not a body there. We actually, right at the moment, we have two vacancies, both from officers leaving, one from retirement, and the other officer had a medical condition and left. So we're looking to backfill those now. So that would be filled before July first.
And how many people did you want on top of that?
So we were looking to bring our complement total to forty four. So this puts us, this puts us at thirty seven.
You're at thirty seven with those two.
Correct. With the July budget as proposed right here, that puts us to thirty seven.
So you wanted seven new positions?
Yeah, essentially, we'd actually have been eight positions. So and and probably I should maybe explain this a little bit further. So we have the ability right now to use permanent intermittent officers and special police officers. So the way prior to reform worked, an officer candidate could be hired off of civil service, go to training at the Basic Police Reserve Academy, receive reserve intermittent status and then be hired by the department and work in a part time capacity. That could be either civil service through permanent intermittent or could that could be a seasonal officer that works May first of September thirteenth. During our summer months, when we see the pink amount of activity, we would typically have ten to twelve additional officers on the street that are available to handle our patrols in the harbor, Hummer Rock Beach Spits, out on the water, handle parking enforcement. They're outside the union contract. Their scheduling works a little bit differently and their pay rate is considerably different. So that has historically been how we've done things and those officers have also basically been our our recruitment ground. So we're able to bring those officers in, work with them, see how they work. They are allowed to see how we work and we get a really good idea of whether or not we want to commit to them when a full time opening comes up. We've had a great process for decades of hiring officers this way and it works out really well because when they're ready to go full time, they're already hitting the ground running. But also, we've had a number of people that we've essentially not moved forward with and ended their employment because we realize that they're not going to be the right candidate moving forward. So from the town standpoint, we're ensuring that as best we can, we're getting the best candidates. And before we invest all the time, money, training to bring them up to a full time capacity, that they're truly going to be a good fit for the department. So that unfortunately with, while police reform, there was a lot of good things in the legislation that we can work with. That's a change that while there's a good thing in terms of what the training is to bring officers up for a community like Situate and a lot of the other coastal communities, it dramatically impacts the way that we can staff. So we really need to look at that going forward. We have a diminishing pool right now because we've been hiring full time officers. Our pool of PIs is already being reduced. We're about to hire two more full time, which means our pool of PIs go down. They're no longer doing basic reserve training, which means that there'll be no one else feeding that funnel again. So we just called for eight part time officers on a list that we have now to see if there's anyone else out there of those. We basically, I'm sorry, we hired, we called for six, we got a list for eight, which was our entire exhaustive list for the town and only two of those people actually have the training. So they won't be able to help us feed this funnel going forward. So within the next year, we're anticipating that there really won't be anybody else in this pool, which means we need to look at increasing our full time complement if we're going to be able to provide the same level of service. In the backup documentation that you have in there, there was some staffing comparisons that I did to see how we compare to other communities. And particularly when you're looking at Situate being a top within the top twenty five of safe communities, Massachusetts, how does that compare to other departments that rank and what is our staffing level? Where we sit right now, we're pretty much on average. As soon as you take away those reserve officers, those part time officers were significantly below what that is. And if you look at us just compared to our south shore comparable universe, if we had a full complement and we went all the way up to forty four, we would be in line with them even in the winter months. So looking at that in the balance and the way the town is growing and and what our population looks like and how the community functions throughout the year, we're looking at being able to provide at a minimum the same level of services, but really we want to make sure that we're able to provide greater services and answer all the requests that are out there as the community continues to grow and evolve.
What Karen Canfield, I think you had something you wanted to ask.
Yeah, I don't know if you can see me. I'm wearing.
I just I am now. Thank you.
Chief, I want first, thank you so much for the very thorough background. Took the lion's share of my prep for this meeting.
I apologize for all the reading.
No, 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 it's it's very important conversation. So one question and then a comment, if I might, Madam Chair. The question is, for this summer, you it's if I read it correctly, it's it's not going to be ideal, but you you can adequately provide the services that we will need for the sur- the surge. I hate to use that word, but for the for the summer residents coming in.
Sure, we're yeah. And I think I think you hit the nail on the head. Is it ideal? It won't be. But we have some people that we worked with last summer who were able to come back. We have a couple of people in the pipeline that we anticipated off of this new list that have the existing training that will be able to get them up. So we won't be at the place that we want to be, but I think we'll be able to get through. And this is one of those things too that comes with the budget impact and and I touched on this in in the write up too, but you know, historically, I think the way a lot of police departments have worked is, well, just hire people on overtime. People will come back in and they're happy to work fifty, sixty, seventy, eight hours a week. hire people on overtime. People will come back in and they're happy to work fifty, sixty, seventy-eight hours a week. And that's how we have staffed. And in in today's world, people don't want to work eighty hours a week. So we've got that challenge that we're facing. We don't want to be ordering to work, ordering people to work constantly. But the other side of it is, okay, if we do put a shift on now, instead of paying somebody twenty dollars an hour, we're now going to be paying them upwards of forty, fifty, sixty dollars an hour, depending on who it is. So there's the staffing impact, but there's also a significant budget impact just to have the same level of service, even if we can fill those shifts. So a long, a long answer, but it won't be ideal, but we're going to make sure we get through for the summer.
Okay, so my comment is as as you demonstrated in all the backup materials, this is a super complex problem that I don't think we're obviously going to be able to talk through or solve tonight. And I would suggest that this, you know, and then come after we get, probably after we get through the budget cycle, that we schedule some time to really dig into this to see how we're going to address this problem because you know, it's not the department's making. And you had some really good points about, you know, if we don't address it, we're, you're going to be looking for lateral moves and if we got people unhappy because they're working fifty hours, sixty hour weeks, we could lose people. So I think if Madam Chair, if we could put a pin in that bigger conversation, but definitely make that a priority, that would be a good question. And then I had some other non related to this, but I'll let Mark continue and then come back to those questions.
Well, my question would be Karen, you're up at the State House a lot or virtually at the State House. Do you think there's any appetite for amending the legislation so that communities like Situate that have large influxes of population in the summer could be somehow accommodated? I understand the whole reason for all of this is that the the need for well trained officers and so, you know, I don't think anyone's suggesting that that we shouldn't have well trained officers, but there, do you, do you think there's any appetite up at the State House for any sort of change?
I I think with any big piece of legislation, which this was huge, that then unintended consequences come up and it gets tweaked. So for sure. It was my understanding that our state legislature was going to reach out to Chief Thompson when I saw this, when he brought this issue to our attention. So I don't know if those conversations have started, but I think they're going to be seeking your input on ways to maybe propose amendments, but you know, as everyone knows, it takes a little while to get there. So we might have to have parallel conversations.
Well, it not to put Jim on the spot, but Jim managed to pull off quite a feat with keeping the Coast Guard station open by getting all of our neighboring communities who had an interest in that, you know, fired up. And so maybe it's possible to get some of our neighboring communities to work with us on addressing what I know the Cohasset chief is a little crazed over the issue. So. All right. Anyone else? Yes, Tony?
Hey, Mark, ju-just to clarify, so I understand the pipeline issue, right, where where we're trying to solve a problem for the future. But in terms of the service and the staffing, well, if we were to hire more full time employees right now, is our overtime, can we pay for that with our overtime dollars? I mean, there's a over a half a million dollars of overtime. Is that, do you see that happening?
Yeah, I mean, I would like Jim or Nancy jump in, but I would say the answer is no. I mean, our overtime budget in a lot of cases isn't necessarily for backfilling shifts. While that's true, it's backfilling contractual shifts for vacation things. It's also paying for training. It's paying for court time. It's paying for jailers. It's paying for storms, all kinds of unintended things that are over and above just filling a shift. So there's a lot that just happens that out of that overtime budget where we need to have that just to maintain our regular operational services and meet what the mandates are that we have to meet.
Right. So if we added seven, and I'll take it to the extreme, if we were to add eight people, that's way more than we've ever had, right?
Takes, takes, it would take us back to, yeah, fifty years ago, probably.
Okay.
Staff level.
So for like, let's say the last five years, we've been about where we are right now. So those eight new people are going to do what? Increase the services we're providing or cut down the overtime or both?
It would be a mix of things. So if you look at adding those people, we would look to add an additional officer in the schools, a school resource officer. You know, I mean, we didn't, not even to to open that up, but Situate has one. If you look at comparable towns, they'll have two, three or four. We know that we need additional services in the lower grades. We would look to transition things to have officers that are more community service focused so that their job can wind up being in the summertime. It might be on the beach, on the spit, multi purpose. But also then working more with businesses and community members throughout the course of the year so that they have a point of contact. When you look at eight people, it doesn't suddenly mean that we have eight more spots to fill, as you know, too, because all of those people are, they're working on a four and two. How often are they on in that coverage? So it winds up changing things a little bit. So on the one hand, there are some overtime expenses that could potentially be saved, particularly on the seasonal side. But on the other hand, you'll have a bit of an offset on that because those people also need to be trained. So really, we're looking to to make up particularly on the seasonal side, a lot of that coverage that we need to have happen. And you know, there are contractual things that come along with that, too, just saying how many people are we going to have working on any given Saturday?
Right, but we had them like they're in the budget, the same as they were last year, and we had them last year, right? Under the, under the seasonal salary line.
Seasonal and part time, right there.
We use part time people.
Exactly.
So you're saying we would now use full time people?
Exactly. And that's, that's a place with those two line items that we could absorb some money with those two, with the seasonal and the part time.
Well, I think we have to dissect it a little bit and see what, you know, when we speak of a school resource officer, that may be another bucket of money somewhere else that we can find to help support that. You know, that's a huge increase, right? To to increase that staff by, you know, because it would go into not the officer staff, but in the they go in this this lower part of the budget. So it'd almost be like a thirty-three percent increase in the staff in that bottom part of the budget.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's a significant change.
Yeah, yeah. So okay, I, I think I don't have to state the obvious. We'll have to ease into it, but I agree with Karen that we should talk about the components of it in more detail and see if there's a way to fund fund it slowly.
Any other comments? Questions? Now Karen, you did say you had a couple of other items outside of what the original discussion was?
Yeah, outside of the 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 obvious elephant of the staffing is the other conversation, which we don't have, probably won't have time tonight, but I think we should probably put on on the future is the Mark, you mentioned sort of regional cooperation with with our neighbors on different things. And one of the big things that keeps coming up is that is the whole shared waterways in Cohasset Harbor. And then that just brings up the whole kettle of fish about all the various enforcement needs on the water. So I think that both regionally and internally, we should, we're going to have a water waste or a resiliency conversation. But I think sooner rather than before summer, we should have a conversation with sort of the public safety people. And I know, I'm sure you've already talked to Cohasset. They've been very anxious to have those conversations. I know from the board level, they've talked to us. So that's one thing. And then two very important things I just want to mention is I hope that everyone in town knows that on Sunday is National Law Enforcement Day. And so it's a good day to to thank all of the folks that work so hard in that department. I just found out about that myself today. And I also just wanted to give a shout out because it appears that your longest serving member has snuck out the back door without us getting to say congratulations and thank you to Officer Wood. Arthur Wood has retired and he snuck out the back door apparently.
Yeah, we have a few people who really enjoy like just exiting stage right very quietly. A few of the old guys. So Officer Wood finished up just shy of thirty-six years on December thirty first. And for everyone out there who remembers Officer Art in the schools, obviously, he he was a huge impact and it was it was really not too long ago that I was before the board talking about his thirty-fifth years of service. So yeah, congratulations to him.
And thank you to him.
Absolutely.
Pass along our thanks and he helped raise my kids.
Mine too.
All of our kids.
Yeah. All right. If there's nothing else, shall we move on and thank Chief for coming in, coming on?
Thank you.
And we'll keep these conversations going.
Absolutely.
All right, next, we have another chief up.
Thanks, Steve.
We have the fire chief is John Murphy here.
Him here. Good evening. Happy New Year and healthy New Year to everyone.
Same to you. So some accomplishments for the year, which I'm sure there were many, including the new fire station down in Hummer Rock.
Definitely on the list. So I call response, this pandemic not going away and all of our firefighting E M T paramedics that are outstanding job. You know, they're in front lines, contacting people constantly, especially lately. I want to thank them all for their outstanding work and the perseverance to get things done safely overall. We've stayed really healthy in our department. E P E use they use, all the safety plans they use. So they've done a great job and I wanted to thank them all for their efforts. Second, the station, Station Four was completed in December. Recent ribbon cutting, we're happy with the station down there. I think it's going to be great for everybody in Hummer Rock and Mossfield and also Situate for many decades to come. It's been a long battle, but with the help of, in support of the boards in town, citizens in town for funding that, we're very appreciative of getting that completed. Big boat tech is down there doing the handicap ramp. We hope to have that completed in a couple of weeks and wrap everything up. Second, thirdly, we were able to hire eight paramedics in a pretty challenging environment of getting paramedics in the last year. We hired two more recently, just interviewed before Christmas. They're going to their physicals this week. They get the P H T. So we anticipate they may be on maybe June, July. Once the academy tests take a while, but we've been fortunate. I think we come in here, we try to sell what we have here in town, sell the town itself. The new facilities do help. When you have, when you're hiring people, they like the facilities compared to some of the older stations in neighboring towns. So we've been very very fortunate to get these medics. I know we have the most medics hired in the, probably in the south shore. We've been, we've been very, yes, so appreciative of that. And grants this this year here, we had four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in grants. In the last seven years and three months since our administration started, we've had one point four million dollars in grants. But we're very aggressive with grants. Our grant team that helps me out is Deputy Elliot, Lieutenant Sean Cashman, Fire Federal Leadership Region. We have a great team. We have a lot of grants. We pursue every grant we can possibly find. We've been fortunate to get over one point four million in the last. Those are the positives. There are many more, but I know we go along that idea. So if you want, we could jump into the numbers.
Please. And if you could start with the top number, what the or the bottom line number? What you requested, what the T A approved and what the difference is?
Yeah. So the bottom line is our, our, our request is pretty much the same. There is, there is a little deviation on the request. Initially, in the overtime, we were asking more money as recommended by the finance director, but in the end, we agreed pretty much with everything on the salaries. I think a lot of that's just anticipated calls. On the overtime, in the last year and last couple of years, we've been a little bit over two hundred thousand dollars short in overtime. But we've made that up in salaries because we had less people. So as we get more personnel in the door, we anticipate that overtime to be able to, yeah. Still felt we need some more overtime to get through this section. Below that is just sort of contractual stuff, education pay, holiday pay. Some things changed like longevity, when people leave, they get the top longevity, people come in to get the lowest. So those numbers do change. It's just basically stuff on the call. So the the total budget change was two hundred and twenty-four thousand four and and in in this personal purchase of services changed, the total was fourteen thousand dollars. Nine thousand of that fourteen are for warranties. We've been fortunate to get upgraded technology. Our ambulances, we have Lucas machines with the CPR machines. We have striker stretches with the electronic stretches, the loading systems. We also have cardiac monitors. Not only have we ambulances, but on the spare engines when the ambulances are gone. And also try to have them in our triage rooms at our stations. What happens is we cut most of these on a grant. On a thousand dollar grant to get a lot of this equipment, plus some of our new, our new purchase and our ambulance standard equipment. Now it's white equipment. But the warranties have all run out. So this nine thousand dollars, we have to have at least minimum warranties to do annual inspections on this equipment to make sure it meets standards of O E M S. That's what this nine thousand dollars of funding, the other five thousand in funding is for software. It allows all of our EMS, fire, paramedics and E M Ts do online training that's required. A lot of the training in person was restricted through COVID. The software is our second year using this and it's been very successful. Everybody likes using it to getting everybody accomplished. They're learning a lot. So there's a fourteen thousand dollar increase per services. And that's, that's our increase in the numbers in a nutshell.
All right. So bottom line. Your request was five million, five hundred ninety-four thousand and twenty dollars versus the T A's recommendation of five million, five hundred thirty-three thousand twenty dollars, which is a difference of sixty-one thousand.
If I can explain that.
That would be good.
Okay, the fifty thousand dollars you see in the overtime, that was taken out. I was actually recommended by Nancy initially, and I think as we went forward, we we realized that we could probably get away with a little bit less overtime money. The eleven thousand, I also put in for a software called Lexapro. Lexapro is a company that provides S O Ps and S O Gs for the fire service. And now that we're in Ocean State, we have more guidelines and policies and mandates to follow. This company takes all the fire, fire based S O Ps and S O Gs. They monitor it and they they help you get it set up. And they also, any changes that come out, they send you the changes. You can train on them. People can now go on their phones and say, all right, I read this. Let's check it off. I learned as I know. It's also a C Y A with town. Something goes wrong, the first thing they say is raise your S O Ps.
We, we got a lot, we got a lot of acronyms there. S O P, standard operating.
Standard operating procedures, standard operating guidelines. So but these, you know, we have, there's probably three hundred and fifty or four hundred that you would need. We, we've been working on this since I came in. We've got about forty or fifty completed. It's a lot of work. I also would love to have a second deputy chief. Most departments our size have a second deputy chief, but I understand it's not the budget right now. So if we can get this accomplished, take that burden off and make sure we're really prepared. Training and guidelines and S O Ps that that we have early ready. So that's what the eleven thousand dollars is coming. We're hoping to get that through the end of my budget this year. That's why the eleven thousand will stay. At the end of this year's budget.
What you have left?
The last couple of years, we've, we've done well. We've come under budget and we hope.
All right, members of the board, do I see any hands? I do not. Nobody has, nobody has anything to say. All right.
I will say, Chief, great job. You know, your, your team continues to do a standing job with all our weather predicaments and all the COVID stuff, particularly over the last couple of years. So I can't say enough about the team. The only thing I noticed is one vacant spot. Who you, how's that hiring going and what's, what's the plan for that?
We did hire, Tony, we decided, we attempted to hire three personnel just before the deadline was December fifteenth, try to hire for the holidays before the new list. We were actually able to get two that committed to Situate. They still have to get, of the P H T. That leaves one vacancy, somebody that is one person that's leaving. His paid workers in for each of the disability. Oh, that's the vacancy we're looking at to hire in the near future. Right? If we get those all hired on paper, we'll be fully staffed. We're going to take till the fall if you get that accomplished. But for the first time since I can remember, you know, that's, that's, you know, if everybody stays and there's challenges to that, too, as Chief Thompson said, you know, try to retain them. And you know, we're trying to, we're trying to pay that surrounding town.
Yeah, great. I I agree with you. I haven't seen it this low. The vacancy number low in a long time. So it's phenomenal. And I know there's a lead time between hiring and actually working. So.
Probably about nine months, I think, you know, probably four, five, six months to get to the academy. And that's ten weeks long to get back. So I'm going to estimate between six to eight months before all the people we just hired, I'm going to guess. It's a process, but everybody has to go through it and out of the deal.
Great. Good job.
Anybody else?
I just, I want to highlight for the people at home about what eight hundred thousand in grant money in the last three years is just fabulous. And thank you for the folks working on that. Just, I mean, I don't, obviously helps the department, helps. I mean, I don't, obviously helps the department, helps people, but also um help them keep costs out too. It's, it's a tremendous job.
And Chief, I don't think you took credit for it, but um you, you get donations from the community to help out as well. And those are all extremely appreciated. I know there were a couple of uh individuals and companies who donated. Services and goods to uh outfit the Hummerock Fire Station. So um, thank you to everyone in the community who supports our fire department so generously. And thank you, Chief, for all the work you do.
Very much. Yeah, we do appreciate all the donations on towards the patient. By board towards helping the boat. So people have been very generous and uh it's been pretty good use and we do thank everyone for that.
All right. If there are no other questions. Thank you, Chief. Happy New Year. Have a good night.
Happy New Year. Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night.
Now we're on to public safety communications, uh number two thirty. For those of you who don't know what that is, I think a lot of people think of it as dispatch. Is that right? Who's doing this presentation?
I'm Mr. Barbara DeWolf.
What? Do I hear a volunteer?
I don't see Barbara DeWolf on here. I don't know if one of the chiefs wants to uh. If they don't, I can do it as well, or we can reschedule her.
Well.
I might help him, but I don't have her budget in front of me, but.
Well, you know what? I, I would, I would like to have her come in because I, I think we would all like to express our appreciation to that department. I don't know if people understand, but a long time, not so long ago, uh, we had separate systems for dispatching. And it was kind of a patchwork way of working and uh the town eventually with the new public safety building. Combine the um fire and police dispatch and they work so hard and they're, it's, it's an amazing operation. Um, so if, if the board doesn't mind, I would like to ask.
Actually, Karen, she's trying to get, she's gonna be get joining us in a little bit if we want to skip to the next person.
All right.
And then she can jump in after.
We will do that. Thank you. All right. So let's skip that. We'll come back to it. Um, next up, we have the veterans budget, five forty-three. And is Don here?
Yes, excuse me, I am.
Yes, our veterans agent, would you like to talk to us about the work you've done this year?
Uh, sure. So um, this year, we, you know, we've been very active, even though it's been COVID. Again, with the help of, the help of the uh, the Veterans Advisory Council, we were able to um. Establish the uh situat as the Purple Heart Community, um, which was a, a real nice honor. Um, also, um, the um Chair of Honor Dedication for Memorial Day, which was another great ceremony for the town and. Um, again, through uh the VAC, that was a lot of uh work that they did, and I think they did an outstanding job again. The biggest thing that uh this office has gone through during the COVID was uh we switched our state. Web base uh where we do all our chapter one fifteen on and we um monitor and um bring on new clients and um. Get the town reimbursed. They decided uh to switch over to on-base their new system. And take all our files, move them over. It was supposed to be seamless. Um, as, as these things go, it wasn't that seamless. Um, we're still working through it. Um, all the training has been online. So normally we would go up to Lemster, there's three hundred and fifty of us who go up there and we'll get the training. And we can do hands-on and ask questions and work through all the details. We have to do this through videos. Um. And then our own self-taught, but again, we worked through it. It's um, we've accomplished it. We're online. Um, we're going through recertification now. So, so last year, that was a big, big thing with uh moving into the building too. So we had that going on at the same time, moving into the new office, working out of boxes and uh, and then going through that. So. A lot of, a lot of things have happened, a lot of great things. Um, and uh going forward, I see, um, again, I'd see more um. More programs coming online and more access and helping out the veterans and, and their families. So, um, so it's all positive stuff. Um, and that's just, you know, that's just some of them. Um, with the budget, um, as usual, I, I, we try to keep it level funded. Um, again, we um are reimbursed back to the town on our chapter one fifteen um at seventy-five percent. So. Um, we keep a close monitor on that. It's tough with COVID. Um, unfortunately, over the last uh year and a half, we've lost um some of our clients. Um, some moved, some have passed, um, some have gone into, they've finally gone into um facilities. Um, again, this COVID has been, you know, everyone's dealing through it and we're all working with it, but um we're doing our best and um. So with the budget, our numbers, I, this year, we put in, I, just a little bit uh lower on our subsistence. And that's with funding the chapter one fifteen. The numbers have been going down over the last two years, again, probably because what, you know, I've just said. Um, the other thing too was um stimulus checks. Um, there is an asset limit that you have to meet to get on that program. Um, so with that, they've been getting these stimulus checks. And now we're dealing with a population that is at high risk. They're not going out, they're not kind of enjoying their lives like they normally do. So. Their bank accounts might be getting a little bit higher than they're normal, uh normally would. Um, so. They, but unfortunately that puts them out of our um programs. So this was addressed by all of us on our, our weekly videos and the secretary um finally came out and said. It has been raised, but we're gonna raise the asset up. So they finally just did this. They moved it up to. A higher level to accommodate for the stimulus checks and what's been going on. So um. We'll see now, we're in the process right now of doing the um January through um next June certification. So I've already found a couple aren't qualified and I'm working to see what we can do about that and get new people on. So. That's the reason with that, again, we do that every year. We try and forecast it. It's tough. But we've been doing really well with it and I think um I'm very comfortable um where we are with that number right now. The rest of the budget again is, is always the same. Um, you know, we have to flag the, the graves, take care of the uh cemetery over, over here. And again, that's reimbursed back again at a seventy-five percent rate. So those numbers again. Um, they go up just a little bit with um, again, with supply um increases um the cost. But uh we've been doing well with that, very comfortable with those numbers also. And um, so yeah, so we, we came in pretty much where we were, have been over the last few years with the budget. And I feel that um I'm comfortable with it, um, that we can operate on that.
All right. Um, thank you, Don, for all the work, the veterans, that the events this year have been very um. Heartwarming, um, and well-attended and there seems to be a, a good spirit among the active veterans, at least in town. So that's. To be commended. Um, does the board have any questions?
I have a question, Karen. It's more.
Yes, Laura.
Um, thank you. Don, thanks for everything. I'm curious, you know, I know COVID probably wasn't the ideal time and maybe not, may not be the right gauge, but. In your, being in the uh new facility, have you seen? A greater desire, like more people coming in for assistance because your facility is better, because I know that was always such a challenge for you in town hall. Was the privacy. Um, so I'm just curious if our, the number of clients that you engage with has increased and, and what that feedback has been.
Yeah, great question. So again, you know, we just, we're talking about the chapter one fifteen and, and those numbers, but. On the other end, in, in which has been, yes. So the two, the, the, to answer your question is absolutely yes. Uh, we do the fully developed claims, so the federal claims now. And these are the veterans that have been sitting out there and, and may have subs, uh, had some type of injury during service. And they'll come see me and we'll start this process to get them compensated for that. Um, so that would be collecting all the medical evidence and putting it all together and, and putting it in. That has increased now that we're here because they're, they are using the facilities for other things. Um. Which is great. So they're coming up now, they're walking in, oh, here's, here's the veteran suite and they'll walk in and, and they know we're here, they know the hours, they um. They talk, so they go downstairs, they may have um coffee hour or men's breakfast and they're meeting. So they're talking maybe to some, a client that I have already helped. So they'll say, well, go up and see Dawn, you know, so um. My basket is full. It's um, the only problem on that, it's great that we're putting them in. Um, the clock, when I put them in, the clock starts ticking for them. So. The federal side can take as long as they want with their problems, but once they resolve it, it, it's retroed back to the date I put it in. So. I always let them know that. Um, in my risk and challenges, I did put that. Um, the numbers are. Again, back to the, kind of back to the days just before I took the job where the backlog was substantial.
I saw that.
Um, our organization has sent out a letter to Congress um through our reps. To see what they're gonna do about getting that uh sped up. Um, they're addressing that now. Um, I know they also have approved um blue water sales for Agent Orange and um Camp Lejeune too. So they have to adjudicate those, those um cases. So that brings that back into the fold. So now again, where we're looking at fifty-five hundred thousand that were backlog. Um, even though they were working on that, now you have to bring back those cases. So it's um. They, they're working on it and we're gonna get it through. Um, all's I can do to these, for our clients and our veterans and their families is just tell them that uh. Again, it's in there. They have to adjudicate these. They have to come back with an answer and um. Yeah, they have to pay that retro to them too. But yes, to your, to your point, it's, it's been very busy, which is great, which is great.
I mean, not good for the backlog, obviously, and.
No.
Be those representatives that are listening to our meeting can also help advocate, especially with Congressman Lynch as well, who's a big veteran supporter. And help, help move that along somehow. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. So I think that was, you know, one of the big wins was. Providing a comfortable space for more folks to come in and access the services that they deserve.
Yeah, and I, we just recently had um through the VAC again, which is great, more outreach and that's their big goal. They had the, they had the breakfast. Uh, questions and answers. Um, so again, we're gonna have a lot more of those coming in the future. Um, so that'll be great because of the facility. Yeah.
Thanks, Don.
You don't have to, you don't have to be a senior to go into the senior center, if anyone has got a question about that.
No, they don't. No, yeah, they do not.
Anybody else on the board? No? All right, Don, thank you so much and thank you for all the work you do and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you and thank you for all this.
Happy New Year.
You too.
It's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Lorraine, I think I saw Barbara DeWolf's name come up. Is she here?
Yes, she is.
Would she like to tell us about her budget and her department's accomplishments?
Hi, so um.
Hi, Barbara.
Go ahead. Sorry about that. So the budget pretty much is basically um set on personal services, which is the um. Just the payroll for the dispatchers. Um, I did ask for an extra two hundred dollars uh for office supplies. Since we have to buy the ink now and the ink that we use for the printer um is also for police and fire. So it gets used uh all the time.
And that was approved?
Yeah.
Good. Well, maybe you can tell us a little bit about, you know, your department. I was trying to explain it before you got on the call. But um, you know, explain what you do so that the people at home understand.
So what I do is I um run the dispatch center, which is nine full-time um dispatchers. We have one part-time dispatcher and we have one per D M right now. Uh, we did have more last year, but. Apparently a lot of people don't want to work. Um, and we answer all nine-one-one calls and public safety calls for the general public.
And you do it well.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? Comments?
I guess, Jim, I'm glad you gave them their two hundred dollars. For the ink. Um, that must have been an easy budget. I, you know, as Karen's alluding to here, you guys do a spectacular job and, and you guys make. The fire department and the police's job so much easier. Um, and you know, I've seen a little bit of it firsthand about just the. The poise and the professionalism and just the um real service that. You know, that your department provides and it's uh, you know, dispatcher is, is really a bad. Description of what you guys do. You are part of the public safety of the town and it's uh, it's, you know. I know all the board appreciates it so much, all the work that you do. So, thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
I, I have to jump in and say this. I mean, it is.
Andrew, yeah.
Thank, again, thank you for the work that you do. I mean, the, the anxiety and the stress for some of these folks that are calling and for you to help. Kind of quarterback that. Uh, it's just, it's, it's. Almost indescribable, the fact that you're able to do it. So just thank you on behalf of so many uh folks.
Thank you.
Can I just have a question?
Yes.
Barbara, this is more current. Um, thank you. And I just wanted to ask, do you have the technology that you feel you need? Um, I'm just curious, you know, looking forward um with the way in which communication is going quickly, you know, what are your thoughts, thoughts on that?
Uh, right now, we have all of uh the state of the art um that we need in there. Um, each time nine-one-one gets updated. Um, we get that right away. We were actually one of the first ones that did the rollover with um, when it went to, drawing a blank right now. Where, where they did the whole, where you could follow. Um.
The enhanced nine-one-one, Barbara.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so with the enhanced nine-one-one and that's really, um, that's a real great thing that we have. So we are pretty much up to date with everything that's needed.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that you're being, you know, newer in your position, that you're not shy to advocate for anything that you need to make sure that. Uh, we stay on top of things. So, good news.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else. Thank you very much, Barbara. Appreciate your getting on the call.
Thank you. Sorry about the delay.
No, no, no. Happy New Year. I'm challenged in ways you wouldn't know in the technology. So I, I understand.
Have a good one. Happy New Year.
All right, you too. Uh, next up, we have beautification. Did I see Leslie Danielle?
Yes, I'm here. Uh, Siska's here too.
Oh, I, I, Siska I saw as well, yes. Ladies, would you like to tell us about your budget requests this year and some of your accomplishments? I guess they're mostly visible to most of us, but.
Um, it, I guess I'll go first and then Siska and I'll just lay out kind of the numbers. Um, and I know you have the uh list of our budget components. Um, I just was gonna break it down a little bit more. I know forty-three percent. We, of it really is for our, the contract labor. Um, and that is, that is for the twelve railroad islands um around town. We did sign with a new um contractor this year, a new three-year contract coastal excavation corp out of Duxbury. Uh, they're um significantly cheaper than what uh we were paying Bill Morris. Um, and so far it seems to have worked, you know, well, um, you know, as of, as of today. Um, and then we have um five percent of our budget goes for shipshape day. Um, and I just wanted to give you a number. Um, we had six hundred volunteers. Um, and we had twenty volunteers that distributed supplies this year. Uh, and we collected a total of ten tons of trash. Um, which was great. Uh, we have uh twenty-seven percent um of our budget goes for plants and materials. This year, we spent a thousand dollars on plants for the railroad islands that we all got. Uh, the plant material came from Sylvan Nursery. Um, and we spent fifty-four hundred at our N C farms. Um, that was for the merchant and adopt-a-lot programs. We had uh forty-six merchants this year uh from the harbor, Green Bush and North Situate that participated. And we had thirty volunteers that maintained the twenty-four adopt-a-lots around town. Um. And then the last thing we had, uh, twenty-five percent is uh, was our special project. This year, we completed the final phase of a multi-year project at town hall. This year, we completed the final phase of a multi-year project at Town Hall and the Board of Health Building for a sum of sixty eight hundred dollars. Um, the commissioners uh all volunteered their time uh to water plants, shrubs and trees at both buildings uh throughout the summer. And we felt that it um came out pretty good. Northern Oaks, Steve um Leach did the plant material and it put it all together. And as far as we're looking at risks and our challenges for um two thousand twenty-two, the main thing is it's always hard to attract volunteers. We we do have a good group. Um, it does seem to have grown. Um, and the other thing that fluctuates that we don't have a lot of control over is the cost um for the merchant uh flower program. We give the fifty dollar vouchers to everyone. But just to give you a um a ball of of the, what am I saying? All right, so from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, we had around seven thousand dollars that was spent a year. In the last two years, it's been more around five. So that's a two thousand dollar difference. I'm assuming because it went up about two hundred and fifty dollars um last year, it's going to keep building back to where it was, hopefully. So but that's one figure that we, two thousand is can be a lot coming out of our budget. Um, but that's one of the things we just don't always know what's going to happen. Um, and the other thing, the big thing that is the maintenance of the public spaces, um, that remains a challenge, like, for example, doing the Board of Health Building and then the Town Hall. Um, and we have some other areas that we're interested in doing. Um, we haven't decided on the project for this year yet. So those are all um you know, variables that we can't totally control, but um but that that seems to have worked out. We we ended up using all of the budget. Um, last year's budget, I think we gave back twenty five dollars. So we were able to use it all. We figured out a way to do it. And I guess I just, I think Siska can say a lot more. I know we did one new thing we did this year. We did the um Christmas tree in the gazebo and the common, and we did get a lot of favorable comments about that. And we actually wondered if you if it would be all right to leave them up for a little bit longer. I know the holiday is over, but they they still look really good. I know I drove by the gazebo today and people have continued to decorate the tree. So um, you know, I I obviously we won't leave it up too long, but we wanted to run that by you to see if it was all right to do that.
My personal opinion is, as long as it looks nice.
Yes.
I had to take my tree down early this year and I was not happy about it. So I think as long as you it looks nice, why not? But I'll let the board decide. Thank you, Leslie, very much. Could you just explain to me what the voucher program is?
Um, it is a, it's given to um any merchant that wants to participate um in Green Bush, the harbor um and North Situate. And it's basically all, you know, all the merchants on tho- in those areas, and they want to make, you know, they want to do something in front of their, you know, shop. Um, and it can be anything from the window boxes or flower pots. Um, you know, it depends on what they want to do.
Well, where's the money come from for the voucher?
It comes out of our budget.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's a part of our budget. Yeah.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions for Leslie? I know we have Siska here as well. Good job on the numbers. Thank you.
Yep, um, we have added a a new adopt-a-lot at the Marine Center. Uh, in the past, we were never able to take adopt-a-lots that had a memorial in them, and we changed our uh uh our guidelines for adopt-a-lots. So at this point, the Marine Center is also an adopt-a-lot. Um, we've also proposed to the library to reinstate the adopt-a-lot there. We have been really excited uh with some of the schools' participation in various um uh projects. We uh we were able to do a much better job thanks to uh Michelle Segazi and Lorraine's training of our new IT person. And uh we have a wonderful video on uh our website of the uh uh fourth graders of the Cushing School about how to recognize garlic mustard and how to eradicate it. Uh, we were thrilled with a donation that we received from the Gate School Citizen Project, which is a donation that we have been asked to use for uh cleaning beaches. Uh, we may be uh able to go and buy a solar um uh that uh, you know, a trash uh can or um whatever those big things are called. We are also um very um, you know, thrilled with the plantings at the Town Hall. Currently, we have also voted to support the library if they would like to eradicate the um the knotweed that is on their lawn mulch it. Um, maybe uh they will be looking to see if that uh they can also save some off the plantings that are there. Uh, we will find out if they want to accept that offer or not, but we also have some other offers or uh other projects that we're thinking about, including painting the Town Hall if we have the money.
I'm all for that.
Well, we we also have a lot of discussions each time about um the maintenance of town-owned uh buildings like the Senior Center and also the library and how to move forward with um uh getting people to include in their budgets uh a maintenance uh budget, because the plantings are very expensive, and when something goes awry, it's very expensive to remediate it and would be great if there would be some maintenance included in everybody's budget of the town-owned properties.
Maura, I see you've got your hand raised.
Maura Curran. Yeah. Hi, um, Siska and Leslie, thank you so much for everything. I feel like you're taking on some things that really probably belong in the DPW budget. So I want to make sure that um all of your wonderful insight and observations on how to maintain our town and keep it beautiful, you know, from an aesthetic, from a planting, from flowers, that that information is being shared with Kevin and the Public Grounds Group and that we've got a partnership, because I personally don't think that beautification should be buying trash cans. I think that belongs in DPW. I also um love that you have your eye on the maintenance of these buildings. So I'm curious how that information is getting shared and how that partnership is forming, because I think you're you're having some great insight. But I, and for instance, I don't think the Beautification Committee budget should be paying to paint Town Hall either.
Uh, uh, I agree with you, but we are always very troubled about the fact that there is a Town Hall that really uh could look so wonderful and so attractive. So it's one of the things that we keep on bringing up, and I agree with you. I don't feel that that is something that that uh would fit with us. Uh, I do know that the uh Beautification Commission has purchased large trash cans for the conservation park before. So that's one of the reasons that when we did receive this money from the Gate School with a request to use it for um uh uh the cleanup of beaches in particular, that that has come to mind. It's not an uh an issue that we voted on. I have sent a a number of um inquiries to both Mike Breen and Kevin, and uh I do hope that they'll respond to our inquiries, because I don't know um what is within our wheelhouse or not, but yeah, the one thing is that um Mike has been very helpful in going with us down Front Street and pointing out some trees that may have to be removed because the real roots are getting too big and the possibility of replacing them. Which would be something that we would be happy to do. So we are trying to be very careful to to uh let everybody know what is happening. And um we are not moving forward on anything until we hear from anybody else.
So maybe what we should do is, you know, I'm happy to help you with this is get together some joint meeting with yourselves, Kevin, Jim, I would I would probably Kevin Kelly and facilities as well, you know, Jim. I think we need to put together a little bit of of a team. So I do think that the Beautification Commission has a special eye for these things and can give some good insight. And let's make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward.
Yeah, and and I, we are also very aware that Mike's budget is not uh, you know, covering a lo- a number of people think that Mike is able to do weeding and all kinds of things, and his budget, uh, I believe, you know, having talked with him and um uh Kim Dami uh is barely enough to go and keep all of these sports fields under um control, you know, can keep the mode and what have you. So I I keep on um trying to make sure that people understand that. I don't think he has the manpower or woman power or the people power to to go and deal with weeding and that kind of stuff uh at different buildings in town. So because because and the the other thing is that when we have requests in that area, I keep on pointing out, uh, we all are pointing out to them that they're working with a bunch of, you know, seventy-plus women who are kind of beyond uh reading at this point. Well, it was very tough doing all this weeding at the library and then seeing that, you know, it didn't go anywhere. So that was very sad.
I agree with you. I think we need to take a broader look at how we're taking care of our public grounds. Everybody works so hard, and even a couple of years, Tony, I remember you requested the addition of a public grounds employee, which I I believe went through. So maybe we didn't do enough with the addition of the new fields, right? Maybe we didn't take a broad enough look at our entire town and make sure that we've got that Kevin and his team has the right amount of folks to make sure the town is maintained at a level that we all would like it to be.
Yeah, al- also, weeding is incredibly time-consuming, so.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. And backbreaking.
That's all, but thank you, and I'm happy to help kind of foster that.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to do that. So and any way that we can support the town, we're we're really thrilled to do that.
If I could interject um that that the Beach Commission should probably be involved in the conversations, and they're just like getting restarted. But um I know they probably welcome input, and they actually have money.
Yeah, and and Leslie's on the Beach Commission as well.
There you go.
I'm actually, I'm not anymore. I did, I'm not a no longer. I was on there, so I do know people on it, though.
Yeah.
So that'd be great.
Yeah, and so so we've been working very hard to um develop a lot of connections with a variety of people so that you know, we can offer support if they want to and not if they don't want to.
Well, or or just observations, advice, suggestions.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone else?
Very much.
I just thought of the point that Kevin Kelly, Kevin Kelly does have money in his budget to paint the Town Hall. Uh, we tried to get it done in the fall. We couldn't get a painter.
Oh, I'd love that old color paint from the, you know, when it was first uh put together uh in the sixties or whenever that was, the fifties.
If you want to pick out the paint, the last person you want picking out paint colors is me, trust me.
My husband loved it. He said, I remember the Town Hall looking that way. When he saw the old, the old paint on the on the underneath everything.
He he does have the funds, so we're just trying to find someone to get it done.
That's great.
Right.
Hopefully Spain will get it.
Sharing of information uh puts a lot of people at ease there.
It does.
Thank you. That's exciting.
I have a suggestion for you offline, um, Jim. Anyway. All right, shall we go on to the final budget for the night, the Historical Commission? Number six ninety-one. Is there anyone here from Historical Commission?
I do not see anybody here from Historical Commission.
All right. Um. We want to put them off to another meeting. What's the sense of the board? I know they like to talk to us, so um why don't we postpone them and see if we can get them in at some point? Because they've got a lot of properties they take care of. Not a huge budget, but a lot of work. All right, so now that Nancy's on my screen, our next item, well, we've actually, we've got discussed vote, new septic disposal license, McGonagall Septic Services. Does anyone have the motion?
Move that the Select Board vote to approve a new twenty twenty-two septic licensed McGonagall Septic Services post office box forty-four, Humrock, Mass.
Second by?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Onto the next, uh, discuss vote, DPW Transfer Station backhoe. A Milton Cat for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars DPW. And I just saw Sean McCarthy on my screen. Sean, would you like to tell us about this wonderful new machine?
I'd love to, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Happy New Year.
Same to you. Thank you. Um, yes, this is for the replacement of a a twenty thirteen backhoe loader that we use at the transfer station daily. Um, it's also used for storm cleanup and snow removal, uh, particularly on the Drifway and in Cole Parkway. We did receive funding at the special town meeting in October to purchase this vehicle. And currently, it is disabled. The rear backhoe arm has snapped. Uh, so we're in the process of trying to find either a replacement part or how we can repair that. Uh, so right now, we're using actually the highway department's um transfer station loader to get by uh for now. But it has over sixteen thousand hours on it. Um, equipment is typically measured in hours, which sixteen thousand hours translates to about nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand miles uh on a car uh that we would drive. So it it sees a lot of use. It runs every day. Um, and it's a crucial part of equipment at the transfer station. Uh, I would like to make one correction to the final contract amount. The motion in front of you is for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we've been working with Milton Cat. They are a state uh vendor on the state bid list. Um, and working through some of the components that typically come on a backhoe and ones that we feel would suit better um at the transfer station, just from years of experience. Um, the new contract amount is one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. So a little lower.
So to to clarify, we're not buying a broken machine for a hundred and twenty-seven or a hundred and twenty-four thousand. This is to replace the one that is currently broken.
That's correct. Thank you.
And you're going to try to fix it so you'll have yet another one.
If they, yeah, if the money's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Like a motion?
Please.
All right. Thanks, Sean, for that summary. Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to purchase a twenty twenty-one Caterpillar four thirty backhoe loader from Southworth Milton for a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars and nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Sean.
Happy New Year to all.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Oh, all right.
Great, you're able to find one. Isn't it? They're so tough to find.
All machinery.
Yeah.
Find.
Yeah.
So the next up, we have uh discussed water treatment plant financing options. Uh, oh, I I do want to say that uh number three under new business has been postponed or removed from the agenda. So we're on to number four. So i- is Nancy here to do the water treatment presentation?
I I am here.
Sent us a a deck with a lot of information on it.
Do you want me to share this presentation or?
That would be great.
Hopefully, you're seeing the presentation.
Hopefully you're seeing the presentation and not my cast.
We see it.
Okay, so um, this is to start the discussion about how we want to uh. Fund the water treatment plant that is on the capital plan and recommended in the town administrator's capital plan. Um, it's still to be heard by the Capital Planning Committee and then to come back to the board to decide if they want to put it on to the April Town Meeting. So this is informational and to be used as a discussion tool and does not. Want to imply that the board has made any decisions. So with all of those um, disclaimers, moving along.
Yes.
The estimated cost of a new treatment facility and demolition of the existing facility on site. Uh, is currently fifty million dollars. Previously it had been less than that. Uh, but with all of the things that have to happen with the new facility and the rising costs that are going on in the environment, the estimate has been raised. Uh, there are multiple funding sources that could be brought to bear against this. One of the most um. Uh, material would be the ARPA funds. And we've talked about those before. We've already received fifty percent of the funds from the Commonwealth, so just shy of a million dollars. We will be receiving the balance of those funds, so we'll have one point nine eight million.
Hey Nancy. Sorry to interrupt you, but do you want to advance? Cause we still see your, your.
My screen.
Yeah, it's not advancing for us. I mean, I have it up. I'm following you on my own, but. There we go, that.
Yeah, so, um, so the ARPA funds that in total between the Commonwealth and probably what we can access from, from the county, it's going to be five point five million. Those funds could be applied towards the water treatment plant. If we just, if the board decides to bring forward the water treatment plant and use those funds towards it, it has to be included as a funding source in the town meeting vote. Or Plymouth County will not consider it um, a project uh, for ARPA funds. So that's nothing to do with the ARPA guidelines. That's from the county's guidelines and they're the ones who hold the purse strings on the ARPA funds. From their, from their point of view. Uh, it doesn't mean that all of the ARPA funds would have to be applied, but as you'll see in a couple of slides, there is a material difference in the impact to the taxpayer if we could. Apply some of these funds. Um, there's also all kinds of infrastructure bills in the legislatures, things that have come out. Where those funds will be um, made available, we're yet, we've yet to see. Some of the things that we've seen that we. Um, are difficult for situate is language such as for economically disadvantaged communities. We're not necessarily an economically disadvantaged community. Uh, there's been discussion about trying to eradicate lead. That's where a lot of the federal money, that discussion has been in the pipes. That's not necessarily a problem we have. That's a problem more urban centers. So even though you hear the talk of a lot of infrastructure money. It may not be infrastructure money that is uh, generally something that we can tap into. It's not going to stop us from trying, but. Just so you have um, a little bit of a realistic view about all this talk. There's two main ways to fund the projects, the project. You could either fund it through water rates or you could fund it through the tax rate as a debt exclusion. And just quickly, we'll go over the pros and cons of each. Um, if it was put on the water rates. The positive for those would be if the users of the system pay the cost. This is what you would want with your enterprise fund. Um, the impact is based on usage, therefore low users pay less. Um, the impact may encourage further water conservation by users. And the water of, water rate in effect reflects the, the actual cost of the investment in the infrastructure. On the flip side, there's limited relief options available to alleviate the impact on someone's water bill from this type of increase. Based on the fiscal twenty-one rate, the first year impact was going to be about thirty-nine percent on forty million dollars if um. On a fifty million dollar impact, that's going to go up to a range of forty-seven percent to sixty-four percent. So it is significantly more. Um, users can reduce impact by changing behaviors resulting in a greater rate increase to make up the difference. So. If someone adopts a behavior to use less water so that they don't have a greater, as great an impact. It doesn't mean we don't still have to pay the debt. It just means we'd have to raise the rates even higher. Um, and it might limit availability and I think, I think realistically it would limit availability for other projects to just be rate exhaustion. As a debt exclusion, the pros of it being a debt exclusion, so meaning would be added, added on as part of the tax bill. Um, it's an, the improved water system benefits all taxpayers. So you really, realistically can say that it benefits, since it benefits. All the citizens for the most part, other than well users, it is something that could be spread on to the tax bill as a debt exclusion rather than through the water rates. This isn't something new. We have done it before with the water treat, uh, wastewater treatment plant upgrades. That was a debt exclusion, not on the sewer rates. Uh, residents with a mortgage escrow account, that would allow them to budget monthly rather than having to come up with this four times a year. It could be used as deduction on your income taxes because it's part of your real estate taxes, depending on the level of your real estate taxes. Elderly residents could defer all or a portion of their real estate taxes. And the change in usage behavior would not result in additional increases. So we wouldn't have to. Make the tax rate go up any higher because people use less water. Since at Special Town Meeting, we did accept the um, local statute, local auction statutes to defer water to uh. Uh, water charges, that's also a pro, a pro for the water rates as well. So the cons for having to be a debt exclusion, the impact is based on home, home value, not, not usage. Um, it would not assist in water conservation efforts. So if you have a small family or empty nesters or a single person in a large house. They're going to feel more of an impact. Um, the water rates are no longer accounting for all of the water enterprises. Enterprises' costs, they're being subsidized by the um, tax levy. And it's a harder project to pass as a, a project supported by water rates. It only needs to pass at town meeting by two-thirds vote because it's borrowing article. As a debt exclusion, it would need to pass at town meeting as a two-thirds vote and then it would have to pass by majority uh, at the ballot. So there's another step to this and a step that it potentially could fail. So what are the, uh, what are we talking about if this was um, a debt exclusion? So if this was a debt exclusion, it's material whether or not we would buy those ARPA funds. So fifty million dollars, three and a half percent over twenty years, you're looking at about a five hundred dollar in, uh, impact on the first year. If we were able to go through the Clean Water Trust, the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust and get a two percent interest loan. That would go down to four hundred and twenty-five dollars. If we were able to apply our ARPA funds, all five point five million of them. And just go out to the mega markets, uh, marketplace, it's four sixty. And if you could do all of those things, apply the ARPA funds and get a clean water trust loan for the balance at two percent, you're down to three seventy-nine. And I shouldn't say it down to, it is at least markedly better than full freight in the marketplace right now of three point five percent. So the application of the ARPA funds, the financing mechanism of the Clean Water Trust all help us. The Clean Water Trust has, it should be receiving, if it has not already received, um, significant in, inflow of federal funds. And how they use those funds could be very advantageous to us. The Clean Water Trust used to be um, a financing mechanism that also provided grants. So if they provided a grant to us for however much, that would significantly help our overall impact as well as having the two percent low interest loan. I'm not as excited about the two percent of low interest loan right now because I think we do similarly in the marketplace. Um, overall, we, it, but it depends on what the rates do. The two percent doesn't really move. It's, it's, it's there. The Clean Water Trust is not the easiest um. Financing mechanism to work with is a drawdown um, financing, which means we have to expend the funds. And then put in an application to get the funds back. We do not control when and how we borrow. They control when and how we borrow. So we could be notified that, oh, by the way, you're going to have a debt service payment due in six months. Would, that we might not know um, in our budgeting cycle. They've done a little bit better with that. Uh, but that's still something that's problematic, that you don't know when you're going to be. Um, all of a sudden rolled into a borrowing and you can't borrow the funds that you think you need. So what would that do if it was a debt exclusion um, on our current debt exclusions? This is what we currently have. We're fully retired in fiscal forty-one, as you may remember from my prior debt uh, conversation. If we added a water treatment plant, that's what that line would look like. It's going to jump. It's the same if we talked about adding a school. They're actually similarly sized projects. Um, an elementary school, it's a similar impact. So since it's going to take another. Uh, fifteen years for our debt to mature fully and the debt exclusions, there, there isn't any um. Retirement that, that absorbs this, as we saw with the senior center. Right there is that retirement. So when the senior center debt came on. It, we didn't go up beyond where we had been a few years prior. Uh, that's not the case here. There's just not anything that's going to come off. The middle school, the, the library, the public safety complex, they all went on at the same time. So none of that will provide relief. So the, the questions and the discussion for the board to begin to think about and then come back to me with how I can help you with it. Is what avenue you want to pursue? Do you want to pursue water rates to fund this particular project or do you want to pursue a debt exclusion? Um, and then we can um, talk further about the different types of. Uh, impact statements we want to produce if the project is going to go forward. Um, the other thing that is going to develop as we go through this project, uh, through this process in the, hopefully in the spring. I don't know if you'll get any more information from the MMA conference from the governor. Um, as to when this infrastructure money is going to appear, what's going to be available, especially the Clean Water Trust money, regardless of which way we go. There's, there's the mechanism by how, by which it is presented to the taxpayers to pay water rates or. Um, debt exclusion. There's also the decision as to how to finance it. Whether we go out to um, in the marketplace to bond or whether we go through the Clean Water Trust. So the couple of different decisions that have to be made. And what funds are we going to apply to it? Do we apply our ARPA funds to this? If we do, we need to be able to spend them down a reasonable amount of time. And the reasonable amount of time is probably by twelve thirty-one twenty-four. And whether or not we can do that is a question. Um, we have design money already ongoing. We have design. So we might be able to apply some of this to the design if we thought we weren't going to finish construction in that timeframe.
Very thorough. Thank you, Nancy. Um, so why don't we start with some questions from the board? Do I see anyone who's got a question or do you just want to try to digest this and come back at some point? I guess, I guess my question would be to start with, um, you sort of alluded to the timing issue. In terms of the actual design of the water treatment plant, how soon would we have that and? Does anyone have an answer to that question?
Yeah, I know Sean's still on. I'm not, I'm not sure if Sean would have it, but uh, we've done a preliminary. Study at the treatment facility now. We have to do the winter one, but I think they already have a good idea of what they're looking at for treatment. Sean, you got an idea what the timeline on that is?
I don't. Uh, they're supposed to be coming forward with uh, the proposed options. Uh, both looking at a new site or rehabilitating the sites that's there, uh, where the plant sits now. Um, I think that's the next step, um, before they start to move forward with actually sizing the building. So they're working with two different sites of, of, a vacant site and a reusable site. And the piloting is going to tell them the size of the treatment that's going to be required and the steps that are going to be required. So that's going to end up sizing the building and where it can fit. Um, and then ultimately how all the operations will happen. Um, and they haven't, I, I know they're planning on, you know, a presentation before the board. With their options and what their findings have been to date. Um, and as Jim said, they'll be performing the winter or the cold water pilot study. To be sure that the treatment train, uh, that they're selecting is appropriate for our water in situ. Um, but I have not seen a timeline for um, actually completing the design. It, it, it may be something they have. Um, or at least have projected, um, that I certainly can look into the uh, reports we have now in terms of timelines.
Well, because Jim, I think obviously the, the further along we are, the more advantageous it is for us to take advantage of whatever. Federal money is coming for these types of projects. And Nancy, it sounded like you indicated that the infrastructure bill that they approved but has not yet been. Uh, what's the word? Released, um, may not, it may not have situate as a potential. Place to uh, invest money. Is that right?
I think some of the funds will be segregated for that, the lead pipe issues as well as for um, economically disadvantaged communities. There should be something we can access. I just don't think it's going to be as much as we would like to access.
Okay.
It's not going to stop us from trying.
No, no, nothing. Uh, we know you, Nancy. Any other observations, questions from the board? Yes, Mara?
Just curious, Nancy, what's the um. What I want to say, like the cadence of events with the Clean Water Trust, like how does that pan out with? But as we decide to move forward with a funding mechanism, um, you know. Say you, you use the ARPA and you, you use the three and a half percent and then afterwards we get the Clean Water Trust, like is there? What's the flexibility? I, I guess I'm a little confused at how the different funding sources could all come together.
Um, Clean Water Trust isn't, you have to apply to the Clean Water Trust and see if you're accepted into the program.
And can you do partial or does it have to be for the entire project?
You potentially could do partial if you can't wait for them to decide. Such was the case with the twenty-two million dollar water pipe project. We were rejected from the program. And that, that project took off very quickly. And we couldn't wait for another cycle for the Clean Water Trust to reapply. We just financed it all through the marketplace and we did um, relatively well with the rates. Um, but that was an, an example of that they don't have to accept you. They are a statewide program. So they're looking at how they can craft their bond issuance to get the best rates possible. And if they have a lot of water projects, they may say, you know what, we don't want you right now. We won't, we want more wastewater projects. They're trying to balance out the attractiveness of their issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Andrew.
Nancy, my, so it seems, I'm trying to read the, between the, the lines a little bit on the flexibility. Of um, just going to the marketplace. Man, I know. Interest rates are advantageous now and they may not be as advantageous. In, let's say, six, seven, eight months or whenever, but they're probably still going to be pretty good. Is that, is that flexibility really um? For either refinancing in the future or what you can do? How, how important is that? Um, do you think for us to consider?
Um, for the flexibility, we can only borrow what we can spend down within um, within guy, the arbitrage guidelines. Um, and this Clean Water Trust has the same problem. That's why this particular project could get issued in multiple pieces by the Clean Water Trust. Is the same way that we might issue in multiple pieces. We might borrow five million, ten million and then a year from now or two years from now, borrow the balance as we've spent it down. Um, I. You always like to control your own fate. So if you're your own, if we're issuing in the marketplace, we are the ones who can time it. We're the ones who benefit it from any premiums to pay down the project. Um, but we don't get the benefit of that guaranteed two percent rate. We don't get the possibility of a grant. I'm not a Clean Water Trust fan because it's paperwork heavy and you lose some autonomy. But if they're willing to give us a grant, I love them and I will do whatever they want to, to do and I will jump through any hoop. Um, that they put out there because a grant is a grant. I'll take free money all day long. Um, and I think there's a possibility of grants potentially becoming available if enough funds flow into the Clean Water Trust. And as we're a project that is under design, we're towards that shovel ready. We're very attractive. So, um, I like being attractive when it comes to funding. Um, so I, I, we're. Either way, we're going to have to apply to them, whether or not we continue with them. We can always back out and say, no, we just don't want to do it. Um, but we do, I think, have to apply to the Clean Water Trust if this project is approved.
Got it. Okay, that's very, that's very helpful. And then just to follow up, I mean, this is for, maybe this is for Sean, but. Uh, it does, it does impact my thinking of this and that's why I'm, I'll say now I'm leaning towards the. Going towards the property uh, tax route because Sean, state guidance going forward. The state may have to force us down the line to fix this because we don't have redundancy at our current plant, right? So I mean, we're. If voters don't approve it, we're going to still be, the state may actually force us to do it anyway. And it could be even more, more expensive. I'm just, again, I'm trying to see the, how do we save the most money for ratepayers and taxpayers? Is that still the case that redundancy or Jim?
The best, the best scenario for the town is you have a very good economy, very. The best, the best scenario for the town is you have a very good economy, very low rates. When you borrow the project and then the economy crashes and you get very good construction rates to actually build it. But from, you know, it's just going to get more expensive the longer we wait. They really doesn't tell you, you have to build a new water treatment plant. What they say is you're in violation of the Clean Water Act. And you need to come into compliance. And in some, if you get to the nth degree, the only way to come into compliance is going to be to build a new water treatment plant. We did get a, you know, when we had the TTHM this past fall, the state did ding us. They gave us an enforcement order that we had to do some things, which have been done to do the TTHMs. Kind of upside down, but having an enforcement order puts us further in line to get more money to do a new treatment plan. Because we've been found in violation, we have to fix it. So even though it stinks yet in enforcement order, that actually helps us a little bit. But we've been talking to Warren's office. We've been talking to everybody else in the Marquis's office, Lynch. I'll have a conversation as soon as I can with our new representative Keating. Try to impress on them that we need cash. We need money, grants, however you want to call it, a direct appropriation. Because we have the same infrastructure issues as every other city in town when it comes to water and sewer and all that other infrastructure. And then you add postal resiliency on top of it that we have to come up with and fund. So we also had a conversation, the board members and some of the board members and I were able to catch the air of Lieutenant Governor. Polito when they came down in October, November for the nor'easter. I finally got a response from her staff about setting up some time to talk to her about some of the unique challenges that we face in situ. And when I saw the governor that day, I asked him for twenty-five million dollars. He just kind of smiled and said. Vice, Lieutenant Governor Polito's been very good. She's very good at work, so hopefully we get their air. And as Nancy said, we'll beg, borrow and steal for any direct appropriation we get. Even though the Water Pollution Abatement Trust is great, when you get a two percent loan, we still have to pay it back. And that still comes out of the taxpayers' pocket. So we're going to be hitting up everybody and their brother. To see if we can get some direct money somewhere to put towards this project.
So, so my question is, bottom line, if we were, and I'm leaping here. If we were to decide to do this via an override. What, what town meeting would we be looking at asking for town meeting to approve the borrowing?
It's on the, it's a recommended project on the fiscal twenty-three capital plan. And that's why on your list of potential articles, you have a debt exclusion placeholder in the special and in the annual. So if the board decides to go that direction, they have the flexibility to do it.
Do we have time to make that decision?
Yes, you still have time to make that decision.
Okay. So we, we wouldn't have the plan, we wouldn't have the, the final plan. But we would have a number not to exceed whatever.
Yeah, I think we would, we would know where the, where the proposed new plant was going to go at that point. The outline of what it would look like, you wouldn't have a hard.
Right.
Construction number, but you'd have the estimates from the.
But you're saying we would know for this upcoming town meeting?
That's the plan, yeah.
Okay, all right. More questions from the board?
The only thing that we haven't really discussed, first of all, Nancy, you brought up all the salient points, so great job on the presentation. You know, you could do a combination of the two. You could do part water rates, part, part override. You know, the, the points that stood out to me were I liked the fact that if you do an override, that the. Citizens get a tax deduction from, from the increased taxes, a small benefit for that. The tougher part of that is it has to pass, pass a ballot and that may or may not happen. I also like the other plan because I like having all the costs of the water in one area. Where we can see what it is actually costing us to provide water to the town. As opposed to, you know, not showing all the cost there. So I, I mean, we have some time to mow it over and, and like I said, it can be one way or the other or a combination of the two, so.
Nancy, I seem to recall you're not being a fan of the combination of the two. Could you explain why that might not?
I think it's just confusing for people, but it's not necessarily, it just requires further discussion. And further clarification for someone.
More education.
Yeah, to vote on it. If you were going to combine the two, I think you're, you're going to then incur the ballot vote no matter what you do. So you have that, you potentially have that problem of if that portion fails at the ballot, but the other portion passes.
Well, because the other portion, the, the water rate increase doesn't have to go through town meeting, right?
No, but the project does.
Right.
So, so the, the portion, the debt exclusion could fail at a ballot, which you can do on its own if it goes that way.
Right.
So the authorization to borrow the money, both scenarios require a town meeting vote.
Okay.
It's a two-thirds vote of town meeting because we're borrowing money. Once the authorization to borrow money and charge it to the water rates, then the board has the distinct pleasure. Then of increasing those rates by, as Nancy said, thirty-plus percent to fund the construction. If you go the route of the override, still the same town meeting vote, two-thirds. But then the added step is that the residents have to pass a ballot where it's a majority vote.
So is there any way to do both at town meeting?
I think you'd want to break, I think bond council and probably town council would tell you to break it into two articles.
Yeah.
Because one would be, would have the proposition two and a half language in it and the other one wouldn't. The only other thing that might be confusing from a voter's point of view is, and this isn't us, this is the statute. The town meeting article has a dollar amount. The ballot question does not. Ballot questions don't contain dollar amounts. So even if it was only for half, someone going to the ballot might not know you only were authorizing a debt exclusion for your taxes of half of the amount.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just. Is done.
Yeah, I mean, we're clearly going to have to explain it to everybody in detail anyways. It's the same amount of dollars. Whether you're paying it on your water bill or you're paying it in your taxes, it's still somewhere between five and three hundred and fifty dollars a year. So the percentages are really just.
Tony, are you, are you saying to, to do it both ways, a fifty million dollar borrowing for the water and an override?
Yeah.
The only other complication with that is you could at some point have a hundred million dollars in authorized borrowing on your books. Because they'll both be on there.
Well, I think if we decided, I guess my point there would be is if we decided to do the override and the override didn't pass. Then at that point in time, it would be contingent upon the second one kicking in where we can use it through, through, excuse me, water rates.
Right, but all I'm saying is you would still have an authorization for fifty million dollars on the water rates. Which you then have to have a subsequent town meeting to repeal that authorization.
Yeah, that's.
It's just, so for a period of time, and Nancy's, I know, told me to shut up. But for a period of time, you'd have a hundred million dollars in authorized borrowing on the books when you owe you fifty million.
Right. Unless you make one contingent on the up.
That's what I was going to say. Can't we do that? If we wanted to, I'm not saying that's where my head is at, but I'm just curious.
I think contingent votes, especially when you're talking about borrowing money and overrides, I think bond council starts getting a little.
Nervous.
A little antsy. But we'll, we'll look into it. Just, there are some other pitfalls or issues if you do it that way.
It's definitely a topic that's going to require, I think, several meetings worth of discussions. And that's why I just wanted to get it in front of you so you could begin to, as you are now. I can see the hamsters running in the wheels at this time of night. In all the different directions and it is, it's got lots of different directions to consider and a lot of, a lot of decisions that the board has to make. Before it brings it forward as a project for the voters to, to consider.
Well, and I appreciate this information too, Nancy, because it helps us have discussions, you know, with our neighbors, right? Because this is a huge, this is a big investment for our town. It's probably, you know, the one that impacts everybody.
And I think it's the best time for it to happen. When all, with all these potential funding sources to mitigate the impact that are out there.
That's a good point.
Agreed.
Another question?
Any other? Hello, did I hear? Karen Camp?
Nancy, if. If the timetable for the proposed new elementary school is followed and funding. I know it's a few years out. Where on our timeline with that potential? Cost hit? I just, I can't, I know, I mean, it's a process.
Early as you'd see that would probably be fiscal twenty-seven because that would mean it would be issued in fiscal twenty-six, which would mean for people at home. That's July of twenty-five through June of twenty-six, which seems a long ways away, but they just started their feasibility study. So they have to conclude that and then they would have to come back with a construction project, get that approved. And then put it out to bid and finish final design. So there's, as Tony just said, we're probably at least five years out.
Which is not a bad thing.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
But no, I'm just, on this. That'd be four years into the funding of this.
Yeah, the, the problem we have with the debt of students is we brought on a lot of debt exclusions at the same time. Because, you know, preaching to the choir here with Ford, that there was a lot of deferred maintenance on the facilities. And that has been addressed in the last ten to fifteen years. But because it's been addressed the way, because it has been addressed, our debt exclusions are what they are today. And anything on is, right now is layering on. It just increases. There's not that much retiring right now. And not enough that is retiring that will make a substitute, substitute, I can't even say it, a material difference. Too late in the night and I haven't had enough caffeine, that would impact someone's taxes materially.
Right.
I need words with fewer syllables.
All right. Anything else? No? All right, do we have any liaison reports tonight? Thank you, Nancy. Do we have any liaison reports tonight? I see Karen Campfield. Thumbs up.
I was giving a thumbs up to Nancy.
Thumbs up to Nancy.
You know, we do have public attending. I don't know if anybody had any questions for. With regard, it's up to you whether or not you want to offer that, but I know there are some folks attending.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to offer it. I just can't see anybody. I can only see a certain amount and it's probably, I'm just not as skilled at doing a Zoom meeting. Does anyone from the public?
You have two individuals that are here, John or Katie, if you have questions, if you want to raise your hand, we can give you a moment to make your comment.
Thanks, Seth.
I don't see anybody raising their hand.
And Ms. Conley, I have asked both to unmute themselves. They have not opted to do so, so I believe you do not have a comment.
All right. So liaisons, anybody with a liaison report? I know we're still coming off the holiday. No? Any correspondence from our clerk?
The Massachusetts Historical Commission, Secretary Galvin, just sending a reminder. For the historic, for historical commissions, March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two is the deadline for applications. We'll make sure that our historical commission is well aware of the grant deadline. And that's it.
Okay.
Let me ask a question about that. Do we know if it is in front of them with their request? Isn't our lighthouse designated as a historical landmark? And they've got a large request in before CPC. So do we know if this is a part of that funding request at all? Does anybody know?
I don't think the grant is part of the funding request, but what they would do in their, what I believe they've done in their request to the CPC. Is they would reduce their expenditure of CPC funds by whatever other money they receive.
So are they aware of this, Jim?
I, I'm not sure if they were. This particular grant, I haven't seen this correspondence. I'll have to grab it, make it, send it to them. But I know when I met with them, I said, you need to get in touch with the state because the state has money for these types of things.
Right, okay.
Buy for the grant. So I know they're aware of the Mass Historic Grants. I don't know whether they've seen this actual correspondence, Jim.
Okay, I'd hate to miss out on it.
Very competitive.
Yeah.
Well, we've got a beautiful landmark to protect.
That we spent a lot of money to protect.
That too.
Big, huge wall. All right. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn and sign documents tomorrow if there are any to sign?
Um, I think you have to approve meeting minutes.
I, for some reason, I. Lorraine, which, the December twenty-fourth executive session, is that what you're referring to?
There's two sets of minutes, December twenty-first select board meeting. And the, and the December twenty-fourth executive session, yes.
So do I hear?
Sure, I can make a motion to move to accept the meeting minutes for the select board meeting held on December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second? A second by Miss Campfield? Is that what I heard?
Sure.
Okay, roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Abstain.
Okay. Ms. Karen?
Yes.
And Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero with one abstention. Do I hear a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the executive session of December twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one? Second by Mr. Vignani, all in.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Mr. Vignani, I think.
Mara made the motion. I seconded.
Oh, all right, sorry. My head's moving all around here. Motion by Ms. Karen, second by Mr. Vignani, roll call vote.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yep.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Five zero, motion carries. Thank you, folks. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? One more time.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, folks. And Lorraine, do you need anyone to come in tomorrow to sign anything?
Yes, please. I have a bunch of things here to be signed.
All right.
Right.
And we will see you tomorrow with masks on.
All right, much appreciated. Thank you.
All right.
And check your mailboxes.
Lorraine, thanks, Nancy. Thanks, Jim.
Check your mailboxes when you come in.
Thank you to the Brady Bunch. Bye, everybody.